The voters want a political revolution. They want to hold elected officials accountable. Many voters in Northern California want to divide our state in half. Others in Columbus County are part of the Tea Party movement. I want to unify whether or not we divide. I want reformation rather than revolution. I want an economic recovery and affordable public services rather than high-end fees, higher fees and loss of business and residents. In 2008, I started doing business as a high Sierra community development center to educate our decision-makers with a resource center and a center of American values. Since moving to Portola in 2003, I questioned the city's policies, which impacted my roofing business and other local businesses. We paid business license fees, but we did not receive the services that came to the body. We now have a business, I now have a business with a business license without paying the fee. Twelve years ago, our city administrator wrote a memorandum challenging my personal conduct and accused me of moving to Portola to avoid prosecution for my religious beliefs. When elected to the city council in 2004, he made accusations of religious harassment, which led to the investigation. Charged with harassment and betraying the favor of those who questioned his authority and his artifact management style was his personal conduct. This conduct he brought with him from his previous jobs in the state of Washington. Concerning citizens, he considers social class. He affected council members and staff that had followed his life. I have passed through the forgiveness stage to the accountability stage. For the last six years, I have attempted to settle without litigation. He has just passed my deadline. In 2004, the litigation is estimated, 2004, the litigation was estimated $3 million. Litigation should be the last resort after all efforts to mitigate have been exhausted. Litigation has been an expensive alternative to out-of-course settlements. Last year, the bowels concerns over reported water rates and an investigation into fire at the Riverwalk were their concerns. We paid close to $20,000 to our city attorney. The council should be appealing to our city attorney to cut costs rather than asking the state to cut theirs. The city should have set up $100 savings or legal expenses for our city attorney and expert witnesses. You are accepting, you are attempting to appeal the expense of $271,000 and incurring additional expenses to us and the state. Your appeal has cost about $35,000 to make it. You are seeking to restore trophy rainbow trout fishery sustained by happy fish that are now being found with polyp pods. In 2006, I was concerned with the poison of Lake Davis to eradicate great game fish that had been illegally planted by the DFG in the late 19th century. It was when the DFG had a modern and progressive plan for development, state and management of fisheries for commercial as well as private fishermen. My concerns are recorded in the final EIR. I wrote the opposition to chemical treatment to the state Lake Davis committee. They say the Lake Davis dairy committee support the chemical treatment. In October 2015, I attended most of the trial and agreed with the verdict of the Columbus County jury. The project was conducted in the middle of the recession. The plants were eradicated and the lake was not open until the water then returned to safe water standards. The city was not using Lake Davis water, but attempted to get the water treatment plant online before the treatment. We are now paying for the cost of that, its operation and the constant future development of the state water project. At the trial, I was privileged meets several expert witnesses and state's attorneys. One witness was Peter Moyle. He is California's expert biologist. His book Islands, Fishes of California is considered the bible of DFG. It was revised in 2000 and recommended chemical eradication of northern pocket Lake Davis. He was the reference, he has a preference of native species under protection over alien or non-native species. In 2000, the director of DFG excluded chemical treatment as an option. By 2007, it was considered the only option to stop infestation of the park throughout California. It destroyed a healthy wild fish ecosystem of several top predators and game fish. They were predators on polyp pods that were also illegally introduced to Lake Davis but not eradicated by the poison. Since the trial, I have prepared the Columbus County Fish Habitat Action Plan. I have provided to the Columbus County Board of Supervisors, Bill Towers, and Kevin Rayber. Only the deputy, only the deputy attorney general has taken the time to discuss it, look at it, and distribute it to the leaders, the representatives of the DFG. He has given it to Peter Moyle, who changed his thinking in the next revised edition. I hope the DFG Board of Supervisors and the city council will take affirmative action to restore the wild trophy fishery of Lake Davis. I hope that he will take action without litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to city communications. City council committee reports, let's start with Michelle.
I have that to talk about.
Yeah, local committees have met.
Attending Sierra Valley groundwater board supervisors meetings. Nothing particular, just sort of all about.
Linda. We have a little bit of an announcement today. Henry and Robert and Bill and I had meetings for the safety meeting. And Henry informed us that he no longer wanted to be our fire chief. So the committee reached out and we found and are happy that he accepted Ron Jacobson is now our fire chief.
Very happy to have him. We want to thank Henry for your service, literally under fire, but also in very tough circumstances when you came in and volunteered to do it. We really appreciate your effort and want to acknowledge you.
Thank you.
And I think it needs to be, Mr. Mayor, that Henry's not leaving the department.
Oh, sorry, no, he's not. Unless he moves to Philadelphia.
Not happening.
No.
Not happening. Thank you again. I've got a little list here. I've been speaking with the Elks, Linda Knudsen, and we are planning, tentatively, on June 6th, a Pancake in the Park fundraiser for the library. The money will be half to the library, half to the Elks. I attended juvenile justice, again, talking about our youth and plans to go ahead, and we, there are 14 of us, representing virtually everybody that serves kids in the county. We wanted a special thank you out to Richard Arnold, who came to our budget meeting and graciously and generously donated $2,000 to the city water fund. And I just wanted to say again for all of us here and for the city, thank you so much, Richard. And he had a challenge to those who are financially able to help in the same way. So we hope to see some more benefit from your generous offer. Thank you so much, Richard. I attended the Eastern Columbus Chamber of Commerce. Our desk speaker was from the, from the Resource Center here in Portola. She gave us an update on plans to get all the pieces together to refurbish the church and to expand their services. They have a day shelter for homeless people. They run food programs through there. It's just a going concern and it's really cleaned up and really taken off there. So that's exceptional. And probably, oh, we did that, okay. In the Columbus news, there was a misquote that I was talking about after the lawsuit was, or the trial was, about too many words in there. It's been a long day. Been out in the sun, as you can tell. We were talking about the lawsuit with Delaine Easton, not Easton, Delaine Dragnoe, and she put a quote in there that was a misquote. So I emailed her back and said, we were, I don't think we were talking about the same thing. It was just a comment I made about the lawsuit. And so she emailed me back with an apology. So we're going to clear that up. I'm going to, if there's more to come of it, I'll mention it. And then probably the biggest news today, we do one, big news, one day at a time around here. We have changed out three of these stoves as of today, as of nine o'clock this morning. Each one took about two hours to do. And both companies were involved, both Wolf Creek and Hot Spot. And they were very successful. There's some pictures up here of the, they just sort of, it's a stove, folks.
This one is a special, is a little bit special.
That one is, that one's, which one is that? Oh, yeah.
It's a railroad spike. If I remember, Julie came in this afternoon and gave me a little bit of history, but this one was built by someone a long, long time ago, and it's got railroad spikes for handles and then railroad track on the side.
Yeah.
Handmade.
Handmade. So that was cool.
Is that one of those a rock built way back then?
Yes, yes.
That's what was removed.
So it, it was cool.
This is the one that was removed. She also, Julie also mentioned there are 75 applications in process.
Yes.
And then she's going through them depending on who has, who's completed their paperwork first and scheduled their installations first is how it's come along. So anyway.
Yeah, excellent, excellent start to it. And anytime you can federal money all the way down to the city, then good things are going to happen, so.
There's one of the new stoves.
That's the one on East Quincy Street. That's the one on West Quincy Street.
And what was that?
Well, and the third one was in Portola Heights, outside the city limits but within our sphere of influence. And the way we wrote the ILU to make everybody qualify was to include those in, which one's which? Tier one.
Tier one.
Tier one is within the city's sphere of influence. So people living within that sphere can qualify. And so all three of them are within the first tier. So very, very excited about what's going on.
What happened to the old stove made with railroad parts?
Cut two ribbons and it cannot ever be used as a stove again.
So it can't go to a monument garden for local craft?
Well, we think we can save the door of it as long as the stove is no longer operable.
Okay.
A little concrete or something?
Could do something, yeah. So anyway, that's my report. Next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Most of what I want to talk about is either on the agenda or not ready for primetime, but I will say.
Robert, can you add the line again, please?
I will say while Ron and Henry are here is that I attended the Mohawk Valley Independence Day Committee. They're like our Railroad Days Committee, and they want city participation. This year, they are going to honor a public service award to the Portola Fire Department. They've been looking through their records and they realize that they have such a close, want to have a close relationship with the city and think that the fire department has been unrecognized by the greater area over the years. So Ron and Henry, they did call you the other day?
Yeah, they spoke to several of us.
Right. So Ron and you.
Yeah, Henry's already made me aware of it, so we'll start planning.
Okay. And that's it.
And as you remember, Michelle and I, Mayor Galt and I, were in the parade for 200 yards, about 200 yards, and then our little machine quit, and then we walked the rest of the way, proud as we could be.
With a big old tall heavy flag.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Any other staff reports? Let's go on to the consent calendar. These are items that are not expected to be controversial. And any member of the council has an item they want to fold or can, but I just need a motion.
Stat community issues? Just in the stat community issues?
No, no, I asked.
Well, I make the motion, we accept the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried. No presentations tonight. Order of business, item 8A, solid waste collection and recycling. This is the introduction and waiving of the reading of ordinance number 343, an ordinance to the city of Portola, amending chapter 8.04 of the city of Portola municipal code, providing for regulation of solid waste collection and recycling, discussion of possible action. Mr. Richard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. You have a staff report from yourself and Tom Valentino recommending that you adopt the, excuse me, waive the first readings of the ordinance. As you might recall, we asked to continue this item because Steve and I both found some relatively minor issues that we thought might need clarification for the franchisee and also some legal requirements to be followed. Steve, you want to explain your side? There's just one board change, actually.
There's a provision in there that, well, let me back up. Whenever there's a rate change that's approved by the city for the solid waste, it's applied with Prop 218. So in the past, the city's paid for the cost to prepare and distribute that notice of the Prop 218 procedures and protest procedure. Under the new ordinance, that requirement would be that of the franchisee to prepare and circulate. We just wanted to make sure it's clear that the city would approve that language of the Prop 218 notice, so it's legally sufficient. So very minor change in there, but that was the change.
And as the committee recalls, you all switched it over to the property owner, like the water would be responsible. IMD was reading that as only the property owner. And even if the property sold, the new owner would be responsible for the old property owner's bill. We had to clean that line of junk because that just wasn't working. And those are the only two changes we made on top of what Tom is recommending that you waive this.
I have approval of ordinance 343 and the waive of the second reading.
On the second?
Second. Can you roll the call? Oh, pardon, comment? Does this have anything concerning with the waste up here, the dump, the, you know, green waste?
No.
Oh, okay. This is the other part of, the other half.
They could open up and leave that a little more accessible.
A lot of it coming soon. Okay, we have a motion in second. Roll the call, please.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Van.
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Kuntel.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Okay, line B, public works equipment, purchase of equipment with funds from surplus property sale, discussion of possible action.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this I brought to you last meeting. I don't have the authority to authorize this purchase because it's over $5,000. This is from the surplus funds. It's pretty straightforward. I think Bill asked the amount of yardage in the dump. It's around four or five yards, which is submitted. It's a half a kilometer dump truck on the dump trailer, so, and being pulled by a pickup, so. As you can see, the recommendation is to authorize public works department to use the funds received from the sale of the property for public work purposes.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll look to be approved the sale of the purchase.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in second. I'm sorry, Larry.
Is the sale of this equipment not like what's appreciated? Is it replacing or is it replaced? Or is it just obsolete?
It's a little of both. We are getting replacement, we're making replacement purchases, but it was.
Because like, is that replacing the dump truck?
Yes, yes. The combination is a little different combined, combination, one's a dump truck, one's pulled by a.
I know, I was a river.
Right, yeah. And so it's actually saving, it's a little more efficient.
It is up here, yeah.
Yeah, and so, yes, it is. Do you have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carried. Okay. Item nine, workshop, Portola Highlands Project. City council received a presentation on the history of the Highlands, the development agreement, tentative map. And with the, this is with the idea of explaining a little more clearly to the public exactly what it takes, because I know everybody's been anxious to see something happen, but a whole bunch of paperwork has to be completed and be signed off on and checked off by city staff before we can start. And that's for the protection of everybody here in town. Quite often, developers will come in and want to be quite aggressive and say, you know, if you'll front us some money, we could get started right away. If you start, if you would do this, if you do that. And we just have learned to say no and be cautious and be conservative and be the type of people that we feel are doing a better job in protecting the city. We almost have been burned in the past several times, as John lied to the test, and we dodged some bullets in the past, so we thought we'd open this up to the public.
So, Mr. Mayor, Council, most of you will remember, except for Linda, that in October of 2014, we did rather an extensive workshop on the development agreement. As we get closer towards the final map and the financing of this project, we thought it would be good for Steve to take the lead and give you a little recap of the history and focus a little bit more on the final map and the financing agreements. Because, as you said, Mr. Mayor, sometimes a developer will get pushy or excited to get started and will want to make, take some shortcuts that a lot of times your staff will disagree with, and they may come to you, ask to be overridden, the staff overridden. So we want to paint for you the picture of the importance of these processes and try to get it over with within and out.
Thank you. So my portion of what we're going to talk about tonight, I'm going to give you some of that history again and the rationale behind some of those negotiations. And I know some of you are here, and so you will know it as well if not better than me. Your recollections on some things may differ somewhat. But these are my recollections, and if you want to add to it, please feel free to do so. And Dan's going to talk somewhat about the tentative maps, the importance of the tentative maps, the functions of the tentative maps, and how the tentative maps ultimately get transferred or transformed into a final map, and some of the importance there, and Karen will fill in as necessary. So let's go back to 1998, sorry, do that to you, Lake Davis, round one. The state, the city, the county settled their differences with respect to the first poisoning of the lake, and there was a legislative resolution of the issues and a settlement fund, and the city received some settlement funds, and the council at the time, in consultation with the community, so to speak, desired to stimulate the economy, right? Wanted to have an economic driver. And so at that time, the council decided, one way to go about doing that was to acquire some real property and then sell that real property to a developer who would then develop it into a project and hopefully stimulate the economy. So the city set out to acquire property and ended up acquiring about eight different parcels that constitute just over 400 acres up here on the hill behind us. And a large piece of that was owned and sold to the city at a very substantial discount by a gentleman by the name of Mr. Stone. And he made a gift of a large piece of that. So the city, you know, paid what, all of it, and some, probably well below fair market value for the property, okay? So that was, that was in the beginning of 1998. Once the city acquired all this property, which took several years to acquire it, the council said, let's solicit proposals from developers to find a developer that we want to sell to, a project that we like, that we think would be a good fit with the community. And there were two proposals that came in. One proposal was to develop a golf course and residential community, and another proposal was to develop a residential community with lots of open space and walking trails and hiking trails and biking trails. And the council at the time, as I recall, some of you may well recall, the feeling was there were already golf course communities in the area and that the city wanted to foster and offer a different product, if you will. And so it chose at that time to enter into negotiations with the Woodbridge at Portola developers, David and Connie Wade, and they also had another partner, Alan Vale, who was a building contractor who had actually developed many projects. And their vision was, of course, for Woodbridge, which was a residential, primarily residential community with about 1,000, 1,004 single-family residences, multifamily residences, some bit of commercial square footage, and 125 acres or so of open space with trails and a park. And so spring forward from that 1998 settlement to 2004, March of, May of 2004, when the city finalizes, approves, signs a real property purchase agreement to sell that property to the Woodbridge folks, okay? And that sale was for almost $5 million, $4,725,000. Some of that money was paid at closing in cash, some of it was paid and used pursuant to the real property purchase agreement to construct improvements along Gelling Street, the light standards and fixtures and some landscaping and landscaping up around what was Sierra Pacific, now Liberty Utilities up there. Some of the money was used to purchase a new fire truck, which we did several years ago. And there was a portion of that purchase price, of that $4,725,000, $1,250,000 of that was in a second promissory note. And I'm going to spend a little detail on this because it gets to some of the rationale behind the negotiations and the desire of the council and the community for this particular project. And that note, that $1,250,000, was essentially subject to forgiveness by the city if the developer actually developed the project. So as opposed to buying the property, sitting on it and speculating, and then flipping it, turning it over to somebody else, the idea was the council, the community wanted to get a developer in here to stimulate the economy, to generate some activity, to increase revenues, so that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so by forgiving this note, if the developer met certain development targets, that was a way to stimulate development. And basically, we looked at an eight-year horizon, and there were different targets that would be met so that, you know, after eight years, if at least, I think it was 60% of the total permitted single-family residences had been begun, foundations in the ground, actual construction work, then that note would be forgiven in full. And if the target wasn't met, but there was, you know, some development that got that full out, then a portion of the note would be forgiven. But again, the entire purpose of that forgiveness was to try to stimulate development and not just have the property sit as it's sitting today. And so that's in 2004. And in that development agreement, that, or that real property sales agreement, it required the property purchaser to do a number of things, to prepare a housing element study for the city so that we could determine what our, you know, housing targets should be and goals for our general plan. There's a traffic study, and there's a clear statement in there that the developer would be responsible for all, all of the city's costs to negotiate with the developer, to go through the process of the entitlements that I'm going to talk about here, and basically to make the city whole. The theory, the philosophy was at the time that when a developer comes in to develop property, he or she should bear the full costs of that development, and the rest of the city should not bear any of the costs for that development. So it's quite clear that there's an obligation in there. The real property purchase agreement also. The real property purchase agreement also provided that that real property would be subject to any standard impact fees that any other developer would pay when developing the property. And I'm talking about impact fees for water, sewer, traffic, recreation and park facilities and stormwater facilities, okay? So, that was in May of 2004, right? We sell the property. Now, the developer takes on the task of getting together and going through the approval process with the goal of getting entitlements, the right to, the right and certainty to be able to develop the project to a certain level of build-out, a number of units, a certain number of commercial square footage, knowing that the city's policies, ordinances, council may change over time, but with a development agreement, you get the certainty to know that the entitlements that you get can't be changed. Well, that process resulted in a development agreement in January of 2007, almost three years later. And during that three years, there was CECL review, so environmental review, an environmental impact report that came to the council and was approved in August of 2006. There had to be general plan amendments to allow for development of that property to the density that the developer wanted and the city was willing to grant. The zoning map had to be changed to allow specific parcels to be developed to certain densities. And there was a tentative map that was also approved in November of 2006. And a little later on, I'll let Dan chat about the tentative map. And so, here we are, three years later, and that was not a stunning timeline. Development of real property is by its very nature very expensive and very risky. And when you're undertaking a project of this magnitude where, in effect, just by the sheer number of single-family units to be approved with more than double the size of the city, it's a risky venture and it's an expensive venture. And so, and this time period, that three years to get from real property purchase to development agreement and CECL review, that, in my experience, is not a long timeline. My firm and partners represent many developers down in the North Tahoe Truckee area, ranging from Grace Crossing, Old Greenwood, the railroad, the rail yard right now, developments at North Star. And these projects take time and a lot of money and a lot of patience because there are a lot of moving parts, a lot of legal issues that have to be sorted out, a lot of details that have to be agreed to upfront because the more time you take upfront to work out the details, the more likely it is you're going to have a successful project and less likely it is you're going to have misunderstandings or disputes over what terms and conditions mean. And so, in that development agreement, I've lost the fire department, okay? I'm trying to... So, in the development agreement, again, this establishes development rights and entitlements for the developer. They're very, very valuable tools, again, because absent that, a developer could buy property, have plans to develop 1,000 single-family residences, put a bunch of commercial property up there. And four years later, when you get around to going through all the environmental reviews and conditions to get approval, you may have a new council, the community composition may have changed, there may be a desire to move in a different direction, to have a different type of development, not to allow development. And so, there's all sorts of attendant risks there, and developers know and understand that there's tremendous value in locking in those rights so that they're not subject to change just because the council changes or the policies change or the ordinances change or the community changes, all those things that create a lot of risk. So, for the privilege of granting the developer all that certainty, what does the city get, right? Well, there are a number of public benefits that are required to be provided as a result of that development agreement. And I'm just going to go through them now because even though the city has given quite a bit by changing that zoning and the zoning maps up there and allowing very intense density in some locations, it has, it should receive the public benefits of an expanded economic base, increased single-family medium density and moderate low-income housing stock, okay? So, there's a 12% requirement, the 12% of the housing, the affordable housing. This was in the previous agreement. Again, that developer envisioned an employment center up there, retail and recreation space, public park, ongoing financing for the operation, maintenance, construction of all the facilities. We're talking about roadways, water, sewer, utility, infrastructure, parks, trails. So, the construction and maintenance of all these facilities, the bridges that were to be provided, undergrounding of facilities would be a benefit. The project envisioned that there would be CCNRs reported against these properties up there, conditions, covenants, and restrictions. So, these are, these provisions that affect and bind real property, and they come in a variety of sizes, shapes, and colors, but essentially, they're there to protect the value of the property for everyone by prohibiting commercial uses, by setting up design and construction standards, setback requirements to the extent that they want setback different than what the city has. But, and the CCNRs are generally enforced through a homeowners association that is created by the developer and then eventually operated by the homeowners up there. But the council at the time of negotiating the development agreement thought that these were all very important considerations, to have a project up there that had some uniformity. Not to say that we're going to have cookie cutter houses that all look the same, but just have an aesthetically integrated type of project instead of just a hodgepodge of different housing types, architecture, colors, et cetera. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Mr. Plumbeen, the big orange slot? No, okay, forget that, children's book. He lived on a street where everybody had a different color house, et cetera, okay? So, I forget about Mr. Plumbeen. But the idea here is to provide value, protect the value of property for yourself and all your neighbors. And the development agreement also included that there be a capital improvement plan. In other words, how are we going to build all this infrastructure? How is it going to be phased? How are we going to be certain that the project is built, okay? And there's also annual reviews that you've been through and termination provisions. But I've hit some of the highlights. That was in 2007, right? Developer came and got busy, went to work, and part of the, part of the project approvals were for a number of master plans that you've seen, for about a dozen and, oh, no, I'm sorry, about two dozen master plans, dealing with everything from water and sewer and road and drainage and parks and open space and financing, okay? Financing was a big one. The idea, these were requirements that were either required in the environmental impact report, the CECL document, or in tentative map conditions. And the idea is that for each element of the project, whether it's open space or trails or roads or the water infrastructure that needs to be built or the utilities that need to be built, the telephone lines, telecommunications facilities, needs to be a plan of, you know, what's generally envisioned, how they might be phased in, and again, how they're going to be paid for. I mean, unfortunately, the city has some experience with some developments that have stalled out. I'm thinking particularly about Sierra Ridge, where you have a project that is not finished. It was started and the developer ran into troubles, and now we just have a college just an open mess. And so, developers come with good intentions. You know, they generally want to make a nice project and they want to generally make a profit. And from the city's perspective, our goal is to try to protect the city against the Sierra ridges that are half-built, that don't get completed. And I can think of other projects, if you remove the dark horse down in the Auburner area, it was a big golf course community, residential community, developer ran into trouble. There were roads and water and utility infrastructure that didn't get completed for years and years and years. The community was hurt, the other homeowners were hurt. Finally, the county had had a performance bond to assure completion of those, and the county had to pursue the performance bond to, in other words, go to the bonding company, the surety, and put a claim in and have the surety come in and pay to have that infrastructure built out, okay? That's taken years and years and years to sort out. So, when we are looking at a project like this, especially of this magnitude, okay, 400 acres, there were 1,000 single-family residences and whatnot, we're looking at a finance plan, say, how, well, first of all, what specific infrastructure do you need? And once we identify the infrastructure, then we can have the Dan's of the world who know how to use their engineering calculations and models and studies and information to forecast what the cost of that infrastructure is going to be, to look at the timing of when it's going to need to happen. And then we work with financial specialists, the financial advisors, to say, okay, you're going to need to build this infrastructure within the first five years, within the second five years, you're going to need this much more infrastructure, and the second or third five years, you're going to need this much more infrastructure. So, here's what it's going to cost, okay? And here's what it's going to cost to maintain. Because when you build a road, you know, you can't just build a road and just let it go, otherwise you end up with roads like there are up in Ridgeway, where that project was developed and the roads are pieces of pavement held together by tufts of dirt and grass. There was no plan or requirement to pay for the ongoing maintenance. So, upfront, before a sum of dirt is even turned on a project like this, we, the city, the staff, the city, the community really wants to know, is there a plan to finance it? How's it going to be paid for? Are we assured that there's going to be adequate money at the time that the infrastructure is needed? Where's that going to come from? What happens if there's a problem or things don't go as planned or scheduled or someone runs into trouble? What is the backup plan? How do we assure that, you know, at least we have, perhaps in phases, we have completed roadways, we don't have telephone lines that are dangling off the pole waiting for the next stretch of road and utilities to come along? So, the finance master plan is, from our perspective, is a very critical document because it shows us, it at least tells us what the developer's plans are for financing, initial construction and the maintenance, okay? And so, this detail, you know, we have these two dozen master plans that talk about the facilities that are going to be built. And again, that level of detail still has to result in a final map, the final details of all these plans, but, again, by having more detail upfront, it doesn't guarantee that we won't have disputes, that we won't have a problem, but it does minimize it. Again, the years that we worked with Woodbridge, and Woodbridge, not blessed, they tried hard, their hearts were the right place. You know, the only thing we have up there to show for in the ground is a beautiful courthouse, unfortunately, that is empty, but the Wades donated that property to the state. The state built the courthouse and we started the roads up there. And they were planning the next phases, and despite what you may have heard or read, they ran into problems with their lenders. And the money got cut off and the project fell by the wayside, and eventually they lost it and were foreclosed upon, and the project's now acquired by the Showback Group, and now we know this Portola Highlands. And so, here we are at the stage of, you know, going forward with Portola Highlands. And Portola Highlands, as, and I'm going to wrap up real soon, because I'm sure I'm about at the end of my grace period here. Portola Highlands is a successor in interest to that real property, has the current development agreement that we had with Woodbridge, that runs with the land, okay? It's binding on the successors in interest to the property. So, Showback Group, as a successor in interest, has the benefit of that development agreement and all those project approvals that came before it, the CECL review, the general plan amendments, the tentative map amendments, and the tentative map conditions. And so, it could have chosen to say, you know what? We like that project, we're going to move forward with that project and go with all the project approvals and just get going. But it has a little slightly different vision of the project, and so, it's come in and would like to negotiate some changes to the development agreement, some changes to the master plan, some changes to the tentative map. And so, we're going through that process right now with them. And ultimately, those changes are going to come to the council for ultimate discussion in the public and ultimate approval or disapproval. But right now, we're going through that process, and it's painstaking because there's a lot of detail, there are a lot of documents. We have the real property purchase agreement, we have the development agreement, we have the environmental review, we have the tentative map, we will have final maps, and we've got a plethora of these master plans that need to all synchronize, they all need to mesh, and they need to work together and not be inconsistent. Because if there's inconsistency, if there's ambiguity, if there's uncertainty, what does that lead to? It leads to misunderstandings, conflicts, disputes, delays. And so, the more that we can try to iron out the details early on in the process, we think, the more likely there is a successful project, not only for the developer but for the city and the community. Thank you for listening. Fresh ones from the council on what I chatted about before we talked about the tentative map and final map.
You mentioned the financial package. They haven't developed that yet? How they're going to pay for it? Is that what we're waiting for now?
Well, there are many things. There are many issues that we've gone back and forth, and we've had meetings with them, we've exchanged correspondence with them. They've submitted, most recently, a new financial master plan that we just got the other day, so we've just taken a cursory look at it. So, we have to evaluate it. It appears to be a little thinner on detail than what we'd like to see, but we need to evaluate it and...
And who's looking at that?
Right now, staff, Robert, Susan, Karen, myself. And at some point in time, this is the master plan, but when it comes down to a financing vehicle, so the developer may say, you know what, I want to pay for all the improvements out of pocket because I go along, I want to pay for the roadways and the power lines and the water lines and the sewer facilities and the retaining walls and the park and everything like, such as that. And if that's what the developer wants to do, I think we'll have to say, okay, how is the city going to be secure that those facilities will be constructed when necessary and we won't get left with, you know, other projects? And so, we haven't had that discussion. To the extent that there would be ongoing maintenance responsibilities, we'll have to see what a plan looks like, and they could finance that several different ways. It could be an assessment district whereby the properties within the project, not the other properties outside the project in the city, but the properties in the project would be assessed some amount each year to pay for maintenance, or there might be a fellow roots, community facilities district, which is a financing tool that can be used to provide, to build infrastructure, to maintain infrastructure, to provide services. So, what we want, we'd like to have eventually a very detailed proposal from the developer. It's the developer's project, and we'd like to know what it is, the developer would like to do, and we'll work with them to develop as much detail as we can in protection for the city.
Steve, wouldn't it help to include...
Steve, wouldn't it help to include like a performance bond or maybe a line of credit like Gray Eagle's and stuff?
If the developer wanted to self-fund, wanted to self-fund the construction of those improvements, then yes, I think you're right. I think it would be prudent for the city to require either a performance bond, a letter of credit, or some other security that would provide assurance to the city that that is built. When facilities are financed through, say, a special financing mechanism like a Mellow Roos Facilities District, there's a real property tax put on the property, and so there's a mechanism through the taxation of that property, not the rest of the city, of that property, to support it. So there's some built-in protections. But I think you're right. I think it'd be prudent to require it, and I think it would probably be imprudent not to require it.
Gray Eagle and Kevre just renewed a project that they have, they have notes about that. And would they give a scare word letter of credit through Woodbridge Bank?
Yeah, yeah, to the extent the information in the paper is correct, which we know sometimes it's not, usually it is.
Or is that to have the agency keep us on helping?
So, but I think the information was there was about 99 units, and that was to secure just the roadway
Right.
Construction. So we're talking about, well, right now, up to 1,000 and 1,004 units, but the developer said that we probably add less. We haven't been told how much less, but we're talking about not just roadway, but we're talking about roadway, water, sewer, electric, retaining walls, parks, trails.
So it would have to be considered with all the large, with what Gray Eagle just did?
I would think so.
Okay.
Bobby, against me? Yeah, I see why the city needs an attorney, but I prefer, for your expertise. My question has to do with the first group that bought that property, they engage in a performance bond to make sure that the city, or the city had a performance bond on them to ensure that they would build something.
No, their proposal and their plan was to create a Mellow Roos Community Facility District, which is a, it's basically a taxing entity, okay? So they were going to create a real property tax on all the parcels up there, and that tax would then fund the construction of the improvements and maintenance of the improvements.
No, I think, I misunderstood then. I thought the city had some claw in them that forced them to build houses in five years or eight years. Okay, what happened to that money since they, the first group, no longer is with us? Did the city get that? And if so, what did we do with it?
The answer is no. We did not get that million, $250,000. The property was foreclosed on, and our note was wiped out. So of the $4,700,000, $4,700,000, the city received about $300,000, $350,000.
What was the regional council's city for purchasing the property?
You know, I don't have that figure, Larry. There were about eight different parcels that we put together. The largest was the Stone property, but there was another smaller 25 acres. All in all, the city sold the property for far less than the total cost to acquire all those.
The other question, as I said, the water and sewer plans, which came out in 2007, I wasn't aware that the developer paid for all those. But it also says that it needs to be updated in 2017. So this one's not a good time to drop into that, because much of our means of water needs and have to change. And I'm looking at what we're doing with well experience and that. That is an ideal area to supply and with it, but it also assists the city dwell with these. So we really don't need like this, when you're looking at that too. Because presently, we're just paying for the same water project to update theirs, and we're getting nothing out of it. So I'm looking at it as a good time to do these things, or I'm looking specifically at sewer water. I hope you all listen to the comments, too.
Good comment. So where are we with them now, at this point?
We have had several meetings with them. We just, we had submitted our comments on their proposed plans and writing to them. We just received a written response from them this week on
Tuesday.
Yesterday. So we just got it, literally. And so we need to review it and evaluate it and see where we are.
So staff will be meeting on that correspondence this week, and hopefully with them next week. Again, like I said in my opening statements, they're anxious to get started, and as you heard Steve say, these things take time.
So I'm hoping we can now move to the exciting part of the presentation, Dan. Oh, I'm sorry, to hear about the tentative map and the final map.
Just one question on our development agreement, on our original one. How many amendments do you do before you just say, hey, let's start over? Let's start a new development agreement? We have so many modifications and the mud's so deep, can we just clean the slate and start over?
That's a very good question. You can do that. You can do that.
But you also risk opening up CECL.
Well, does that hurt them or else?
Well, does that favor the city?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, you know, we know where we're going with this, and we have to keep open eyes on both sides, and just if the water, you know, gets so mighty, and they want to make so many changes, and you want to almost reverse the entire original agreement, isn't it simpler just to start over?
It may be. I mean, I think there are several points you raised there. If there are so many issues that are brought up, it can become messy. And so I think what that does is, to the extent you have a workable document, workable concepts and principles on a lot of issues, if you can work with the agreement, then I think it can be more economic to do that. But I think you also have to be careful to make sure that, once you agree on all the little changes you're going to make, you really should come back with an integrated document that reflects all those changes, so what you've agreed to is clear, and not, well, wait a second, we agreed over in this letter that we're going to change this provision and that provision. So clarity is important. Whether you start afresh or not, there's no bright line on that.
Segway to Dan. Okay, you want to wait for Dan to finish, or do you want to interject again?
Well, I just wanted to say, I'm concerned about creating jobs and economic development and revenue for our budget. I would like them to see, not delay any longer than possible.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, great to be here. I don't often get to see you, and I hopefully I'll be concise enough for you here. I do offer a perspective that's a little bit different, perhaps, than others in that. I also am the Sierra County engineer and Sierra County servant, and as Phil mentioned, I was the project engineer, and the project engineer for the Gray Eagle subdivision number nine. So I see both sides of the line and work both sides of the line, and so I have kind of a sense or a feel for the process, not to, you know, make me sound like some kind of expert, but I do have experience in doing it. What I'd like to do is mention to you, something that I often do, is I begin with the end in mind, and I'm going to provide that end to you for just reference. At the very end of this process, as Steve has mentioned, a final map is created. That's the map that allows the developer to sell parcels, that allows them to go ahead and start to make the revenue, the reward, as you might say. In that process, it requires certifications or statements to be signed and executed. The municipal code, our municipal code, says the following, that certificates and acknowledgements and all others now here and after required by law shall appear on the final map. And if you go down through about half a page, it says, city engineer, a certificate for execution by the city engineer. So I'll be the one signing, not Mr. Major, not Mr. Powers, not Mr. Gross, but Dan Bastian will be the one signing this map. And what will I be saying? What it says is, this is part of the certificate, it says, I have examined the map and find it is substantially the same as it appeared on the tentative map, and any approved alterations thereof. So I'm uniquely and very much interested in seeing that this process be followed, so that I can certify at the very end of this process to say that, yes, it does conform with the tentative map that was approved, or any alterations that were approved in the process. So that's a big concern that I have, and I want to see that that happen. The municipal code indicates that the city engineer should certify its correctness. So all the things that Mr. Gross mentioned, all the things that Steve said, they have to be consistently correct. If one of the amendments that was proposed, or one of the modifications that were indicated, is not consistent with the environmental document, is not consistent with, you know, other project approvals, then that would be something that I could not do. So that, you know, that's the other part of the element. And finally, after I certify it, and everything's in place, and then eventually it comes to you for your approval. So you'll be seeing all these certificates on the map, and then that's the final map that's approved, and that's the one that gets recorded and allows them to move forward. So that's the end in mind. So back to the beginning, or part of this that's important from my perspective, is there was a significant process that we went through, or the developer and staff went through, and coming to the entitlements that Showback, as successors in interest, received by purchasing the property. That included an application that was for the tentative map that the city had deemed was complete. Once the application was deemed to be complete, then the city went through a process called an initial study or an informal request, and the responses back from responsible agencies were, here's what our concerns are, perhaps, for your project. For example, fishing game, as they were called back then, fishing wildlife now, indicated that they were concerned about the stream alteration issues and biology and botany and things that would suggest what kind of environmental document to be prepared for this project. Eventually, what was prepared after the resource agencies made those informal comments was, and an initial study was performed, was mitigated negative declaration. Within that document, it identified various things that needed to be addressed, and those mitigations then were captured in tentative map conditions of approval. So the map was eventually approved with conditions. And if I had, I probably did bring, here's what I have for the conditions of approval. It discusses everything from roads, water, sewer, elements that need to be done, phasing, you name it. There's a lot of things that were developed as part of the conditions of approval. That was in November of 2008. And so within the process of filling in the blanks, because there were a lot of questions that were asked and could not necessarily be answered at the time, a decision was made that we require as a condition of approval that master plans be developed that would essentially give the cities the assurance of how this project was going to be developed as Steve described. So master plans were developed, those then were individually and in groups approved by the planning commission. And so eventually, all the entitlements were in place, and then it didn't happen. And so we're left now with, as Lyndon indicated, where are we now? So we basically have a new developer that has different ideas and feelings about how the project should be developed. And so within our development agreement, it includes a process whereby modifications, minor modifications to this process can be determined by the city manager or his designee. And then the city staff has made a determination, because some of these amendments that are being requested might be considered not minor, and therefore require a public process, those would then be brought before the city council. And that's where we are in the process, so the consistency of these amendments and these requests need to be evaluated and then recommended to the council in order for the council to make a decision as to whether or not to approve or disapprove those items. And that's, you know, the challenge here is you have all this water that has gone under the bridge, all this effort that has preceded this, and then you have a new perspective that potentially ignores or doesn't, is not aware of the process that went into it. For example, the tentative map was approved with an access road that would lead out to Sixth and Pacific. That map, then, the developer at that time, Woodbridge at Portola, made a request to the city manager for a minor amendment, and that minor amendment was to change that intersection to Rio Grande and Sixth. The reasoning was that there was too steep a grade that led down into that area, was not going to be real practical in that sense. So once, and the way the development agreement is structured is, once these minor amendments are approved, which that one was, those become part of the project approvals, so they, it becomes part of the whole. So this developer, in the latest revision of the tentative map, has moved that intersection back to Sixth and Pacific, which has created some concern for the ability to do that. And so I'm not sure he was completely aware of what's gone on. So these are the kind of, I offer you that as an example of the kind of issues that we're dealing with. Multiply that by 100, and you'll get a sense for what, you know, we're chasing, sometimes it does feel like we're chasing a bunch of white rabbits here, but in essence, those are the kind of things that we're looking at, and the challenges associated with a new perspective without probably understanding the history along the way.
And you all gave staff the latitude to, and the comments that we don't necessarily need the David Wade version of Woodbridge. We don't need a bunch of bridges necessarily. We want a real-world project that can move in a car, supply a quality of life without it costing a country club fee, so to speak. So that gets into a lot of the master plans themselves that we're going through, as Steve mentioned, and that they've requested to either modify or eliminate. Some of those we, excuse me, agree with, and some we're negotiating on, and some we haven't been able to get to yes yet, but that's part of negotiating. So that's another where are we at?
Dan? I pretty much, and I could go on, but that's the essence of it.
Thank you so much.
So I'll talk about, if you could, for just a second, the final map, because like you said, that has to be approved before they can break ground.
So this project was essentially approved in phases. There were many, six, seven, eight, I don't know how many phases. And so each phase would have an associated final map with whatever that part of the development was. That map essentially is like if you were to purchase a piece of ground and wanted to know what you were buying, you could go and see at the county board's office what that, we've all probably seen what final maps look like. So that process is that, you know, certain requirements in order to actually record the first final map, as I recall, you know, there has to be a wetlands jurisdictional determination by the Army Corps of Engineers. And so that would be something that would be And so that would be something that would be part of that process. So even though there's project approvals from the city standpoint, there's also going to be state and federal approvals that will be required as that. Once all of that, if I receive a final map, one of the things that I do is I evaluate and make sure that all the conditions of approval have been met. So the way that, the way that I'd like you to look at it, whether you will or not, is these entitlements, and that's why they're so important, as Steve mentioned, they run with the land. They're, it's, there's a significant dollar value to them. But it's as if the cake has been baked. We don't go back and try to get the sugar out or the flour out, you know. These are, these are the conditions of approval. And so at the final map stage, you're still not negotiating with the city staff on, I want to move that road this way or I want to do something different. At that point in time, you know, it's all set in stone. And so, you know, there is no negotiating on the number of lots in that phase, it's done. So that final map, the process is all, is all of the conditions been satisfied? And if so, you know, we have all the documentation that would go with it. For example, with the Gray Eagle subdivision number nine project, in that case, I was dealing with the county. I went through and I said, I've satisfied condition one, two, three, four. And I provided, if it was that I needed the fire department's approval, if it was that I needed the state's approval for the water system, I provided that documentation. And then, and then the county reviews it and says, okay, it's all in order. As the paper reported, they asked, you know, those responsible agents for the county, are you okay with it? And the answer was yes. And so the, the, in their case, the supervisors approved the map and it has been recorded. And that's the process.
And part of that is the financing mechanism.
If I could just, just add, because the, the phasing that Dan's talking about, this final map for each phase of the project, depending on the financing mechanism, for example, let's say it's a community facilities district, that entity, that financing district has to be formed, whether it has, it should be formed before any of those properties are sold. Because once there's twelve or more property owners, you have to have an election. Fewer than that, it could be done by the property owner. So, so what's typically done in these kinds of developments is the city says you have to have your financing mechanism in place prior to starting to sell any property in that phase. Because we want to make sure that all the property is included within that financing mechanism. And so there's a lot of preparatory work to make sure that that gets done.
Okay, Tom?
Is the new developer responsible for staff time? Is that being billed to them in all of this assessment of possible changes?
Yes and yes. The, the, yes, the developer's responsible, yes, the developer's being billed, yes, the developer's paying.
Yes, and they don't like it.
So, so the real property purchase agreement required that the developer pay all those costs. That was reinforced in the development agreement. And, and so to the extent that, that these agreements run with the land and, and the developer benefits by those, the developer is also bound by those provisions. So yes, we are, we are making the developer live up to those obligations so that the developer pays the cost of the development and not the rest of the city service.
Well, staff obviously has been in negotiations or discussions or has done this. And Linda is asking like, where are we now? How transparent is what staff is doing to the council? I mean, is staff going to say yes to twenty-five items presented to the council? You guys go back to item number one and two and say no? I mean, is this in ink? If, it sounds like there's always been discussions. And you, you have given staff permission to make some of these decisions. Are you aware of all the decisions and how transparent is all that? Or are you in all agreement and on board with it?
The way, if I could just say first, Dan, the way, the way staff has interpreted that, that direction is work with the developer, work with the changes that he's requesting, work with the changes to the documents, but bring it back to the council in an open council meeting for discussion and action. So, so, so we don't view, we don't, staff does not believe it has the authority to bind the city or the council to any specific changes.
I'm grateful that Chalmak has taken on this part and wants to get going. My concern is we're not in the same wheel signal that we had in 2004. My question is, will they be able to sell once they build? Can they turn it over? When you're saying that we're going to limit your financial ability to sell properties, that's generating revenue for them. I think we have to, what other states do is create incentives to developers and create win-win situations and get this thing going to where we've got the jobs and a market that people can bring to come and buy any of ours there. We don't have it now. We've got picture uppers there that people bought out for closure. And I can tell you from my own experience, we have recovered the cost in property value for the investment. But since I don't plan on selling it, I'm okay. But you know, there has to be incentive for people to build, whether it's a developer or a contractor. He's got to be sure that he can sell a property and at least break even. That's what we have to look at is the win-win for both sides. And I'm looking at it in latter place. We're determining what is the developer's responsibility and the city's responsibility. We don't want the developer responsible for what the responsibility of the city is. Because that's not fair either. It's going to bury them.
Just to remind everybody, it's really easy to say this would be great for jobs and great for economic development. And incentives are, you know, that's how you're going to get that. You, you guys have great examples right now, just looking across the border at how given incentives to developers can really backfire on you. I mean, I don't, I mean, Quashoe County is going to have to increase the sales tax to everybody because they've been giving away the farm and they need to build new schools for the people that came in and they didn't get the developers to pay for that. Because they gave them a whole lot of incentives to get some really big companies that start with T and a lot of, a lot of other things. You have a great example to look at to see what can go wrong. So just make sure you do your due diligence in that and pay attention.
It would be very safe, Dan. I, I have the confidence in, in what the staff is doing. John and I had the fortune of being on the, on the council when the Woodbridge development was first approved and felt really good about the choice we made. The other one would have cost the city, it's a good example of being very cautious and safe. The other, it came down to two. The other one was wanted to create a municipal golf course that would be given to the city to operate. And that's all that took.
We decided we didn't want to go into the golf course business.
You know, the overhead and having examples around this municipal courses that literally bankrupted cities very close to us. So anyway, with that, Terry?
I just have one question. When do you expect this project to get started? Because I'm sure the community is asking about what's happening with Woodbridge. Do you have any idea, maybe two years, three years, four years? Any idea?
It all depends on when we come to agree with the developer and when the developer meets the requirements of each and every part of this development.
Any timeline at all? You have any timeline? Nothing?
When the final map and finance agreement have been approved by the council is when the project will start. And when that will be, as...
Nobody knows.
Is when they get it done.
Thank you.
One last question, Larry.
Is there any more thought at what happens if we come into another recession?
It's like everybody else has to live with it.
Richard, the fun is we have to protect the city against parcel developments.
Well, we're grateful that we have a genuine sense around property up there with some infrastructure to start, you know, like other places have. So we're actually blessed in that respect, that it never got off around. But now we still have, I've closed courthouse.
Richard? How much effect will the development have on the, and how much will rely on Portola's old water and sewer system? Or will that, Portola's new water, or water and sewer system be upgraded to reach the new development ahead of need?
Aside from supply, the...
It's built into the, it's built into the plan. The entire cost of that is built into the plan.
No, I'm asking if, if Portola's current water system goes out of ways. The development, but, but our pumping system is down here in the center, right? So that's the old pipe that they will be relying on. Will that old pipe be renewed so that people coming into this new development get all new?
Part of what, what, as I recall in development agreement, there's a tank, there's a water system tank that will be added into that, that development that they would be getting water pressure from that tank. And they would be, and of course, if they put in all new pipes, that's, that's where it'll be. It won't be coming up from the city, is what I'm saying. There could be some at some point, yes, but basically it's going to be self-sufficient.
So somebody looking to buy into this new development wouldn't read an old Portola reporter story that said Portola has ancient rusting pipes and they won't worry about their pipes?
Well, that's, that's, it's an issue that, you know, we have, we have to deal with.
Well, the fish scales probably for holes.
Right. The, the plan for the water and sewer system is that, of course, they'll have news, new for their development. But our source is Lake Davis or Willow Creek. And so the, the water has to be transferred to their system through ours or basically through the existing infrastructure that we have. So there will be that sharing of facilities in order to satisfy their needs over there. Part of the development agreement required that they participate in a cost associated with our water system, sewer system and so on. So there would be consideration for their participation in our infrastructure.
Just want to say we need to replace the old water and sewer plant. Because if we use the springs and create tanks up there and blend in water with Sixth and Pacific, we would probably supply most of Woodbridge project. And not even use Lake Davis or the old infrastructure.
Sixth and Pacific has an arsenic issue.
But if you start blending water from the spring, you'd...
Okay, thank you all for being here. We're going to close session now. I'm being a king, thank you, entertainers. Two-minute break.